Meeting to order on Monday, April 2nd at the Grafton Garage. Can we have a motion to amend, to adopt the agenda?
So moved. So moved. We have a...
I'd like to make one amendment to it. We have to approve the minutes of March 6th. With the organizational meeting, half content.
Okay, any other additions? So, all in favor? Do we have a second?
No.
Second, sit here, second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the amended agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, now we have to approve the minutes of March 5th, March 6th, and March 14th.
Correct.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
You want it, you're gonna just do them all?
Well, take, yeah, let's do them all, but let's take the first one. Any addition to March 5th first? Any additions or corrections to the organizational meeting, which was March 6th?
Yeah, rather than Monday, they should say Tuesday.
Right, okay. But no, no other corrections?
No.
And do we have any corrections on the joint meeting with the planning commission on the 14th?
I wasn't there, so...
No, I know, you can't. You have to stay on that.
I'll just not get along.
So what else at? Okay, so Cynthia wasn't here for one, so let's do them each at separate time.
Make a motion to adopt Monday, March 5th as written.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, second. All, any additions or cor, and all in favor of the March 5th minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Make a motion to adopt Tuesday, March 6th as written, with correction.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of adopting the March 6th minutes as amended, or corrected?
Aye.
Okay, and the final one, Alan?
Make a motion to adopt the minutes Wednesday, March 14th.
I wasn't there either.
Yeah, don't get the vote up.
You don't get the vote, you want a second there?
No.
Okay, Kathy was seconded. All in favor of Cynthia, and you have to recuse yourself, I guess, or I understand. Not voting, I don't know. Okay, so we got through the minutes. The warrants?
Um, all of, uh, as the law provides, you appoint someone to sign the warrants, you've done all the warrants, and then they have to be presented to you. This is the list that you look at, this list is the one that's kept with the warrants and put in the books that's in the file.
Do I sign this now?
I'm merely presenting, if you don't want to do anything else, the law says I present it to you.
Okay, so we're all okay with the...
Yeah, we all signed them.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Well, the, at the meeting we went to on Saturday, they kind of mentioned that we should go through this little formal deal we just did, which is a little different than we've been doing.
But, so that everybody understands, we, each selectman is also individually approving each bill and still signing the warrants like we have been doing. And then, that's, that's okay to do, but it's not the prescribed way. The prescribed way is, has to be presented so that, like we're doing now. But, we didn't change the policy, we're still looking at the bills as we did before, but this is just something you have to add to be legal. It doesn't make any sense, but that's what it is.
Well, by doing it this way, I've seen where boards have, we've actually signed the warrants up here, but people are just signing it, they're not reading it. So, the way we're doing it allows us to actually individually review it, but legally, we have to do this to make it official. Cross the T and dot the I.
All right, Cynthia, do you have the bids for the...
Do we need to approve them? Is it for two?
No, that's good, there's no approval necessary. We already did that.
Do you need them back, Bill? Need these back?
We have the town hall roof project bids. To deal with.
You do, it's not a sealed bid.
It's not sealed?
It's what?
I don't think anybody looked at it.
From JMW Contract and LLC, this bid is $25,000.
Twenty-five thousand?
Mm-hmm. For prints and specs.
How many bids, we have, Cynthia, two? Two bids, Alan?
Yeah. I don't want to work for it. Sultan, Sunet and Sons Incorporated. Total cost for the project, $37,231. One half, we gotta pay one half the project at signing the contract, $18,000, and then, on the completion, $19,231.
Big difference.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Typically, when we get bids that Danny's gonna look at, we open them, we accept them, but we don't take them on.
No, we're gonna review them and then we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Okay. Danny, you're, you're... Oh.
Who is reviewing?
The select board will. Actually, the committee should review them first.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, yeah. No, that committee will review, you get back to the select board?
Right, correct. Yeah, okay. All right, Danny, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna be trying to smooth up some of the roads and servicing, we had serviced some of the equipment on rainy days, and we have three classes that Bill assigned us up that will be taken in the next couple of weeks, spread out over two week period.
What are the classes?
Um, road maintenance, um, winter operations, paving was one, can't remember the third.
Danny, will you go over the, this inventory and the application that's due in July, and so that everybody knows that we're on top of this situation?
The financial plan?
No, no, the, you know, we have to have the application in for, what's it, X-64, whatever it is?
The permit.
Permit, yeah, oh yeah, that we are actually doing it and all that.
We were kind of waiting on that.
Right, but we're in the process of doing it, I just like that.
Yeah, we need to talk to them, you have to go talk to them.
The general, we have the basics to file the application, we think, and the reason I say we think is because the application isn't even prepared yet, V-Trans hasn't, or, I'm sorry, the DEC, Environmental Conservation, has not decided on what the permit's gonna look, the application's gonna look like. Part of the reason is that the permit fee is gonna change probably from the flat fee for the whole state to a graded fee, and so, Jim Ryan, who's in charge of the program, I sent him an email, he got back to me, then we talked on the phone, and he said that he doesn't know when the application's gonna be done, but we can't, but, so we're on it, but we can't do anything until they finish their application.
I just wanted to go into the minutes that we, we're on top of this thing and that we are proceeding as per the requirements, because it is a requirement that it needs to be filed, as we learned a couple Saturdays ago, by July 1st, I think it is?
That's correct, it needs to be in July 1st, but...
No, no, I understand.
If they don't get the application in first, then they're probably gonna change it.
Well, it's typical, but that's what they tell us to do, so...
Right, we're trying to follow what they, they tell us, but...
Any other questions from Danny and the highway?
Have you had to get any materials for that, for the compliance of that 64, or is that still too far?
No, the only, the only stuff that you do for the, to be compliant is the connected road inventory, which, when regional did it for us, we're just waiting for the final maps to come back, and that's all it really is, and the covert, you know, you're, we already have our covert inventory, um, and the rest is just, you gotta start showing we're doing some of the projects.
And so, if they had a requirement for like stone size and the ditches, is that different from what they had before?
It, that's all done by what the slope is, so there's a couple different ones, yeah, you don't have to have anything in stock inventory or anything like that.
Any other questions, Danny? Okay, um, next is the excess weight permit?
No, no. You have these to sign. This is the annual financial plan, what we gone through with the V-Trans is the budget, and they show that we are spending the required amount on our roads to keep us eligible for grants. Okay, that has to be signed by all of you, and then, that's the second page of that. Then, the next page is that we, our road standards meet theirs, ours actually exceed it, theirs because of, we've upgraded a little bit right after I read, so, those, in both of those, first page and the third page, that has to be signed by all of you and dated.
Okay, why do you sign it? Yeah, Bill, the department, Danny, Danny and Alan, myself, met with them last Monday, and this is when they review your town report, and you have to spend so much money, and you have to do certain things so you can get the grants, and that's what we're doing now. So that, that's been taken care of. And that couldn't have been done until we had the town meeting, so, we're, we're on the right course and we're, you know, we're not falling behind in everything.
And we put in for a grant, we probably not gonna get it, because if we got it last year, we put in a grant for paving, and a grant for about $220,000 for this covert right here at the, at Mont Belro, Bellwood Fisher. So those two are in, and that's, we just have to sit and wait and see if towns renege on taking a grant, we might be able to get it, but probably not.
Yeah, that, we try, according to what Danny likes to try every year, because it shows that you're interested, even though you don't get it, and sometimes, some towns don't take it, for some reason, they don't have enough money to do it, whatever, and then you might be eligible to get one off cycle, which would be good for us. Okay, the excess weight commits, they've been signed, um, there's a list here. We have reinstituted the policy where we, each year now, will mail out to each of the companies, reminding them of the renewal. That was done many years ago, for some reason or other, that stopped, so we're, we're doing that now, and each selectman gets a updated report, so if we happen to see a truck that's not on here, then we can have them from them sign their way through. And Alan, do you want us to do anything about your, about the...
Can't. I sent it to everybody, right?
Yeah, you did.
The reply I got back.
I just didn't know if you wanted to describe it or what.
No, I can't.
Okay. This is over the logging with the log trucks and whatever.
So I, if you, those folks that were here know that we, at past meeting, we had some discussion, and I volunteered to follow up, so, I sent an email to the deputy commissioner of Forests and Parks, and I was trying to do a little homework as to what options and what was available to the select board, so, I know the guy, so, it wasn't Commissioner, it was Sam. As a select board member, with both sympathetic to the logging community and responsible for our town roads, I'm trying to do some homework. During our early quick breakup of roads this spring, we had some road damage done by two different loggers. One had a signed weight permit for the town, and one did not. My suggestion to the select board was that we have our road foreman and generate a fair cost to repair in each case, and we send a bill to the appropriate logger. The discussion was, nothing will happen, you have to catch up, catch them in the act, and, you know, we heard all those sorts of things. I am of the mindset that those that create the problem should pay to repair it, otherwise, I see a policy being created that affects all loggers in our town, the ones that have not caused any problem, in an effort to affect to that caused the problem. So, his reply was, hey, Al, thanks for your patience while I followed up. We are actually in the process of rolling out some logger-trucker safety workshops through the Lager Advancement for Professionalism program in April. There is no logger-trucker organization in Vermont, which there was when I worked, so that was part of finding out if that was still an active organization, which it is not. Paul Frederick will be at both trainings, and we'll discuss with him how we might work things out, this into conversation and presentation. Forests and Parks gets a lot of calls, emails, from loggers who have come up against town policies that are arbitrarily set weight limits low enough per axle, that essentially bans log trucks from using their roads and other very restrictive policies, such as banning all trucks with overweight permits for up to five hours per day for school bus runs, times, and writing to truckers that they can't be in town's road system unless they have business in the town. As you might suspect, and I might also add that the Commissioner has been on the select board and ran off, so, he knows what we're going through too, so he, he sees both sides of it as well. As you might suspect, I've seen the highway department side of this and know examples of loggers plowing through on suitable roads and un, abasing, doing damage, but also have come up against cranky road foremen and policies that are overly restrictive and inconsiderate of the needs of moving wood in the transition season with little leverage to change, that with tens of thousands of dollars of wood stranded. You are correct, bad guys tend to get off, get away with it, and the rule followers tend to suffer from the pendulum swinging. We've had enough calls that studying log trucking and municipal road policies is actually on my summer to-do list. I've spoken with the Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns, and DMV, and AOT about this a few times this winter. Your perspective will be welcomed as we look at policy concepts. I don't know the specifics of your situation, so I could not, I could be out of line on this, but I suggest approaching the loggers and asking them to deliver the appropriate amount at a specific product the town has incurred to be faced with a significant bond next time they log in town based on their history. Giving them some buy-in to the fix and opportunity to make things right with a looming dark cloud of responsibility if they're caused a situation that other loggers will pay for in the future policy decisions. So, thanks for your note, it's helpful for me in formulating some ideas of how to approach this and satisfy the important needs and responsibilities of municipal road use, and we will work on this in the future. Log hauler meeting. So, I think it's kind of important to make that contact with somebody like the Commissioner, and he, he himself came from the logging community, so, he certainly understands the whole story. Kind of reinforces what my suggestion was, that we work up what we think is a fair bill and present that bill to those people that did the damage, and if they pay it, life goes on. If they don't, then the next time they come to town, I think we demand that they put up a bond. I don't, I know, we have a lot of loggers that are not a problem, and I don't want to penalize those folks, but, I just think that they all have to be responsible, and if they're not being, we need to get their attention. So we can discuss it more, or whatever action the board wants to do, but I followed up with it, as I said I would.
I think, I made a note, I think what we'll do is at some point, well, maybe we can adopt some type of policy about what we need to do when somebody does something in the future, since we'll come up again until next year anyway.
Uh, right, but I think we should not wait until next year.
No, 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 we need to work on this, but we'll put it on the to-do agenda. Any comments?
No, I think those two, those are...
Okay, the next item is the designation of agenda minutes postings. We failed to do this at the organizational meeting, but every year we have to pick a newspaper that becomes the official newspaper, and it is the Journal.
Correct.
So, we just need to have a motion that we, somebody needs to make a motion that we accept the Journal as our legal paper.
I make a motion, we use the Journal as our official source of...
Called the Vermont Journal.
The Vermont Journal.
The Vermont, as the, the, our newspaper of record.
Record, yeah.
Right.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There was a, if, if, some of you might remember, last year, the Chester Telegraph wanted to be the paper record. The legislature failed to deal with that this year, so we were only, we cannot have a online paper, it has to be a physical paper that's published, so that's where the Journal is, would be using. And they came up with it, Kim told me, they came up with a decent rate, so I think we'll be all set. We have some liquor licenses to sign.
Yep, the first, first one is MKT, and the second one is for the foundation.
In both cases, there's a free license for MKT, there's a first class and a second class and an outdoor service, so you sign the second, third, and last page, and then on, for the, and it's, they're both first class, so licenses, sign the first, I'm sorry, the third, the, I'm sorry, second, and fourth, and fifth pages.
Do we sign it, or do we need to make a motion to sign that? We need to make a motion, do we approve the liquor licenses for MKT and the Old Tavern or the Winnet Foundation?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think there's another one, sorry. This one here, is there three, this is the MKT, are there?
There's, there's the...
Signed it here.
Yeah.
Signed it. Here.
Yeah.
So, three pages.
On both of them, it's exactly the same, yes.
Okay, well, now we, we got the, we got the, now we can get systems out.
She has to be. Yes, I have. I have to obey and...
Just wait for everybody to sign, I just want to make sure you have. Bill, I'll keep all the signed copies here, we can do, we'll do it after. Yeah. Okay. Okay, Cynthia, let's do the cemetery thing here.
Oh, Cynthia? Yeah, okay.
What are we doing here, do you know what we're doing?
I just, you're dating a...
Ah, okay.
You're authorizing her to sign that on behalf of her lawyer.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, somebody make a motion, authorize...
Make a motion that the clerk sign the...
Justice clerk?
Justice clerk?
Yeah, she just, she signed it.
Yeah, I put it, because my name...
So, do we have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right. The next item is the conflict of interest and ethical conduct policy. A little history, I guess it was back in October, thereabouts, we started to review our code of conduct and code of ethics policy, and some of you might remember, we had a meeting, and there were three different copies, and we finally realized we had the first one, and then, I had directed Emily to see if there was a policy that VLCT would, we could use as a model, and we did, and we had a discussion about it, and at the same time, VLCT said that they are going to revise their, their policy based on what the legislature is going to do, and the legislature met, and they have passed a mandatory, that each town must have a conflict of interest and ethical conduct in place by July 1st of 2019, and that every elected official and every appointed official must sign the conflict. So, we have the draft here, and VLCT has, at the meeting that the three of us attended, Kathy, Alan, myself, and Bill, they recommended that we adopt this policy because this one covers all the requirements by the law of the legislature. So, do we have a motion, or a motion to accept the policy as we saw?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second. Second.
Any discussion?
I think you want to adopt the policy.
Yeah, what I'm, yeah, but I mean, do, any discussion?
Um, well, we each have a copy, so we each could sign it.
No, I have the official copy here that.
That's official, is it unofficial?
That's yours.
Yeah, but we can sign it and pass it in.
That would save me a step, if you want to sign the one that you have in front of you, that your signed one, it says draft on it, but.
This is a say draft.
Okay, then you can sign that one.
So you want us to individually sign this? I mean, what's?
First of all, first of all, you need to.
We need to do it with everybody.
Yeah, you need to prove it, and then all of you sign down at the bottom.
Right, okay.
Don't sign up above, okay? That's where you sign personally.
We sign here, yeah, okay. So, um, so we need to, do we have any discussion about the policy here?
No.
Okay?
I read it.
So, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor of adopting the model policy?
Aye. Replacing.
Well, it's gonna, this, this replaces everything that we have. And then each individual, uh, elected official and appointed official, then will have to come in and sign a new one. Uh, and, you know, that's, that's the process.
Okay, so. What I do think, point that Stan's bringing up is, there is a, a code of conduct.
Well, this replaces all the old, so.
Yeah.
This is now the official one. It takes, it takes precedence over everything prior to, of all the ethics, that, is that okay with you?
Well, that, I think, we're just looking for that clarification, make sure that what's on the books is off and this is on.
Well, it does actually say over here that we present code conduct, I told, I, I adopted October 6th.
Correct.
2014, and it was amended on June 1st, 2015.
Correct.
Alan, will you start the signing process?
Mr. Chair, was there, is there a copy of the code of conduct policy posted on that site?
Yes.
Yes.
If, if you go to the select board site, to the site that says select board itself, you'll find, uh, you'll find the policy there. And I may have to change it from what says draft to adopted. And what I'll do is scan this and put it on there. And then it should, then also end up on the, uh, policies.
This is, this is the official one. Then you have to sign your own individual.
We sign the official.
Yeah, and then you have to sign your own.
You got a copy of it.
Yeah, I mean, I have that here. They have to sign. You have an extra copy?
No.
It's not say draft?
Mine's a draft. That's ours, I can go and sign.
It's okay. We got another one?
I've got another one that is single sided printed, I think, if you, if you want to.
And also, I, I think, I think, um, Bill, you might, you might want to correct me, but I think the, the legislation says that all the elected officials in, in the House have to sign a thing too, I think, don't they?
I think, I think the law states that every official is.
We sign, we should get a copy of this one, so all the signatures.
Well, you can, but I just, well, actually, this goes file.
Yeah, I know, we get a copy of this page and then we sign that.
I guess so.
Rather than, because that doesn't have any signatures on it over there.
Well, there's a couple things going on here. We're making one that's official record for the select board.
Right, but then.
And then we're doing our individual.
And all these go in file.
And I take the, the one that you have also.
Well, here, this is all the stuff, I'll just take it all.
And, is, rather than rushing to do what we're doing, should we wait until there's, we'll be filling this out and it will already be signed, is that what you're suggesting?
That's my point.
Right.
Okay. That's fine.
And, you hear that, Bill?
Yeah, so Bill, we'll sign the ones that have, that you have photo stats with the actual signatures.
Yes.
Um, the next order of, uh, oh, is the select board received the planning commission's action taken on March 14th, um, 2018 to nominate Chuck Wise for the position of administrator officer and request the select board appoint Chuck to that position for three years as provided by Title 24 V S A 448. Do we have a?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the next order of business, we have the list in front of you, uh, for, um, all the positions that appointment need to be filled. They've all been contacted, they're all willing to serve. And, um, Bill's put together a list here of when they're, when they expire and what the length of terms are and whatever. We have a, yeah.
Who's term is the length of the term?
That was determined when they were set up and, and, um, Kim and I went back through the whole list, did a lot of research to find out where everybody was. Um, unfortunately, if you go to some of the minutes, you're gonna see that someone was re, was appointed to replace somebody and their term is four years. But they, in the minutes, it'll say they were appointed for three years. What the minute should have said and, and what was meant is, they're fulfilling the four-year term of the person they're taking the place of. And that's, so, we, that was, caused a lot of confusion. And so, we went back through all the minutes, went back through all the, the former list of all the officers.
So way back it was determined, the interim for.
Yes.
For the planning commission.
Yes. It's all four, they're all four years.
But not the capital budget?
Capital budget's one year. All the, all the terms are set forth on that. Uh, there's, uh, there's some three-year terms and they're, and they're, uh, in fact, I think there's even a, a two and a three-year term in one of the offices.
Yeah, the planning commission, though, four-year terms, the flood board is a three-year term. And all the rest, I believe, are, no, there's the health officer is three years, and the administrator officer, planning and zoning is also a three-year.
Three years, and then the constable is appointed, I guess yearly, is that correct on there? Yes, yearly?
Yes. Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yes.
And the health officer, you're not, you're only, only appointing those that are not marked over.
Right.
Okay, because other people are continuing on it, and you'll see on the other list.
So is the list on the website, the current list that the select board is considering at all? So that we have a clean list?
So, do we have a motion to, uh, who?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Well, yes.
I just need to be clear, what you're doing, you're appointing everybody on.
This list.
That list.
This list here.
As stated on there for the years and positions, et cetera.
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
No votes?
And, and who moves, Cynthia?
I guess.
Then you say.
Yeah. 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 I'm gonna put this here, and I just put okay, and this will be the official one, and you can, okay. Just take, so that you have a record of that one. Okay, um, the Walker Bridge, um, I attended a, um, Windham Regional Transportation Committee meeting a couple weeks ago, in Brattleboro. And, um, the, uh, the Walker Bridge is on the, and this to be rehabilitated. Um, we are apparently number six of, of the six bridges that are in Wyndham County that are, that are gonna be replaced by the state. Uh, I learned some interesting things. Um, the, um, the bridge is in what they call D and E, which is in design and engineering. And it's probably gonna be about six years before they replace that bridge. However, uh, there is no, there's no guarantee for that. Once the bridge is designed, if, if the state decides that they want to replace that bridge in two years, they can, even though it might not be as bad as another bridge. Uh, there are many reasons why they do that, which I don't fully understand, but, so it's not cast in stone that it's gonna be six years, it could be longer. But that's what they say at the time. It's interesting, um, what I learned is that, um, it's our bridge, so we can tell them what we want. We can't tell them how, how to design it engineerally, structurally. But we can tell them if we want, what kind of garter rails we want, um, if we want sidewalks, um, and, and what the bridge looks like. And we need to, we need to be thinking about this. Uh, I can't imagine having a sidewalk down there, but this is what they call a hundred-year bridge. So once this bridge is built, if 50 years from now, somebody wants to put a sidewalk on this bridge, it's not gonna happen. And there was a, uh, there was a town, I don't remember the town, but, um, they had their bridge out of, out of design and engineering. It's on schedule to be built, now they changed their mind because they put sidewalks in and it's too late. So we have to, we have to, we as a board have to decide what we want to do. And, uh, maybe we should get some public comment, if somebody has any ideas how they want their bridge to look. We can't, we can't tell them if we want a curved bridge or a straight bridge, they're gonna design that. And they're gonna design it to whatever the federal specs are, but cosmetically or sidewalks, we can do that. And, um, that also, it's our bridge, and, uh, they cannot, uh, reroute the traffic unless we give them permission. So if we say we do not want a route, reroute, and we want a temporary bridge, they have to build a temporary bridge there. It's our bridge, and we can say we want, it's in our territory. So, um, we are going, we get some comment, if there's any comment on the bridge, or what, what wants to, what you want it to look like, or whether we should have sidewalks or whatever, please send it to Bill. And we'll, we'll put it on a subsequent meeting, and we need to write a letter to the, to the state, um, telling them about the bridge and what, you know, our, what we want to see, and making sure that it's, it's gonna be a, um, no temporary, no, uh, per, uh, detour of a temporary bridge, and all the things that we need to do, because it is our bridge, and they listen to us, and we are, the squeaky wheel gets the grease here. Uh, and if you do nothing, then they'll just do whatever they want to do. So it's important for us to stay with it.
The, the only problem is, you get fuzzy with it, cost goes up.
Yes.
We pay a percentage of, of each of the costs that is involved with it by not having a detour, by having a temporary bridge, that adds quite a bit of money to that project, so whatever our percentage is at that, goes up.
And, and I asked one of the regional, what, what our share would be, and they said it could be anywhere between 20% or, or as low as 5%. They don't know, and they won't know until a time, because it has something to do with budgeted, that is Washington, how much money is given to the state, and how the bridge is designed, and all these other things come. So we have no idea what it's gonna cost us at this point in time. It'll cost us something, that's for sure.
Well, we've already put $100,000 for it.
And it's gonna be replacement, it's not gonna be rehab. That, that's, that's what the state is, is gonna mandate. And then it has to meet federal specs, so it'll have, it won't have a sidewalk, but it'll have that extra width there, whatever, and that kind of thing, so. The next item is the Trehan Committee Report.
We were, uh, we, we talked about this just a little while ago, as far as, uh, what does a town want to do with that piece of land that's there? Do we wanna mow it? Do we want it to grow back, uh, back into the old woodsy environment? And Kathy and I were, were sort of the park and building committee, we've been sort of bouncing things back off each other. I did see something that was, I saw it on the Channel 3 news, where, uh, as far as trying to create a bird environment type of thing, of planting certain kinds of flowers and bushes that bring in, uh, birds and butterflies and things like that. So, uh, we, we discussed that, and, uh, I'm gonna let Kathy kinda take it, take it from there, but it's, uh, I, I think that's a pretty interesting approach, uh, rather than just leaving it the way it is, or just mowing it and, uh, trying to keep that, uh, the buffer, uh, of, of the river intact as such. So, anyway, I'll let Kathy talk about it.
Um, if you watch, um, Across the Fence, which is part of Vermont U V M Extension, they had a program about two weeks ago, um, they always have the Audubon up on, and they were talking about planting gardens for birds, to attract the birds. Um, not just birds, but, but the bees and butterflies and hummingbirds. Um, so if you go to their website, go to Vermont Audubon, um, and click on, and you can click on their website and their database for native plants. And I have a list here, and this is just on trees. Um, so they have all sorts of plantings, trees, that are gonna attract, um, the birds. So it could be a really unique site, um, if we do this. And I know Stan has spoken with, um, a few people, we're thinking of the nature museum getting involved. Um, I also spoke with Don Lawrence, who's a birder in town, and he's interested. Um, we could make it a community project. It would be a unique site, not just letting it go wild. Um, and I know the folks down in that area would, would, um, really appreciate the beauty of that field. That something's nice is planted there. And these would be native plants, native to Vermont and native to the zone. Who would take care of it?
Birds and bees.
No, because a community project could be part of that community or the kids at school, because they love to get involved with that, and also the nature museum.
It's native shrubs, they don't require any care, that's the nice thing about it, there's no maintenance needed.
Sort of self-limiting.
Yeah.
Their growth and things.
And it could be, depending on the plants that you have, you have them flowering all through the season. So they're gonna attract the, the bees and pollinators and, and on part of that field part, if you get it, if you cut it a couple of times a year, you can also put in the, um, wildflowers. So, it could be a unique site. And they, they also offer, um, signs that you put up, what birds you're gonna attract to the site. And I have, and I'm still researching funding, so.
You're still researching part of me?
Funding.
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 Um, I don't have anything against what you're doing there, but I would like to emphasize again that, um, rhycarian buffer, something that's flood resistant, needs to be planted along the edge of the river, so it isn't flood prone and washed away. I think that's an immediate sort of thing that should be done this year. Things like the dogwood and other, uh, very tenacious, rooted plants that.
They have, they have.
Of waters.
They do, they have a list of, um, some of the invasive plants that you want to plant, so the invasive plants don't come in.
Yeah.
So, if you go to that database, there's so much information. So we can work together on that.
A second?
The, the Wyndham County Conservation District also frequently sponsors a program for planting native shrubs, and especially in rhycarian areas. We, we've actually had a grant, a grant once before, for planting willows, dogwoods, the kinds of things that also are resistant to not heat, so.
I think I did see something about, um, Wyndham County Conservation on that, on that site.
Yeah, yeah, so they should definitely be involved.
Any other comments?
Great idea.
Thank you.
Great idea.
Public comment?
I have one. Uh, I wanna state, there was some question about, um, the assistant treasurer. Well, I haven't been assistant treasurer since I got on the select board. Give assistant clerk a test. And then the other comment was about Sam's question at town meeting, why we didn't, um, paint, scrape and painting the bridges? You wondered why we.
Was it duplication of one bridge? I, I don't remember.
Well, because it costs so much to scrape and paint a bridge right there.
Yes.
In this way, if he's gonna do one, one year, it'd be good to have the money set up. In this way, if he's gonna do one, one year, it'd be good to have the money set aside so that you don't tax one year for $30,000, and then the next year it drops back down. That's the point of the capital budget, is to keep things...
Is that for a particular bridge? I don't quite remember.
It's for any of this, any of this steel structure bridges?
Okay. So, basically. As, as they come off through some sort of...
There's no grant funding for painting bridges, the steel structure, right?
Just another comment on the Walker Bridge, we can make a request that we have a Brussels Steel Bridge or a concrete bridge for, for, because that would mean less maintenance for us down the pike. So those are the kind of things that we need to be taking into account.
Which the Cambridge Port Bridge is that type of steel?
Yeah.
Supposed to be no maintenance?
Right.
And that's supposed to never change from what it looks like right now?
Any other public comment?
Can we request a higher bridge than is there right now?
No, that's something they'll do. They'll design that based on floods and whatever. That's an engineering kind of a thing, so...
But, but we could get it, get it under radar or let, share with them our concern.
You could say that we want to...
Considering that higher waters, washing over the...
Right, right. But as I understand, one of the reasons, there are two reasons why they're gonna replace the bridge, well, actually three. One is it's a curve, and they don't like curved bridges. Number two is they, there's no, there's no engineering history on the abutments when that bridge was rehabbed or built. So they don't know what the abutments are like, and it is too low. Those are the three things why they wanna, that's why you have a new bridge there.
Well, I think there's center piers on that bridge now.
Yes.
And that, that would go away.
I don't like center piers.
Center piers is probably the worst case scenario. If you didn't have center piers, you probably don't have to raise, you don't have to raise the bridge. Because that's what they did down when they did my bridge on, down on 121. That was a center piers bridge, and they actually redid that curve.
Yes.
That bridge, if you look at that curve, that curve, those steel beams have a very good curve in them.
Why they say no curves in them?
I don't know.
I don't know either, but they, they don't like curved bridges.
They're, they're more expensive.
I mean, I'm not saying that, I mean, you men don't have an option, but that, that's part of the engineering, I would imagine.
Are they gonna have to take any land?
I have no idea. They're, they're at the engineering stage, so they're doing surveys.
There's a lot of sticks down there from being surveys, and I don't know what they all mean, but they're doing a lot of surveys.
Like they say, it's in the design and engineering state, so at some point in town, there'll come the, what is it, design and engineering, so we can take a look at it. Any other public comment? Okay, any new business?
All right. I'd like to, for the next meeting, I'd like to have some discussion on the town park.
Okay.
We got a report from Hayden Lake, if you, and I shared that with everybody, so you could refresh on it.
This is that one?
That was, that was in May 2017, and we have not taken any action on it. So it needs to get revisited. I have a meeting with Hayden and two biologists to look at some sites for GIA projects on next Monday. And one of those biologists is a person that works with invasives. If you remember reading in Hayden's report, I'm sure you've all read it by now, if you've read that, there's two invasives in the town park. And so, hopefully, Monday, when we go look at the GIA property, at the end of the day, we're gonna go look at those two sites where the invasives are and get, hopefully, maybe we can get some funding to deal with it, but at least get some recommendations. The other thing, I contacted Forest and Parks people and got a reply from Elizabeth Spiny, who is the, she does invasive plants for the state. And her, her reply was that she contacted the foresters down here, yeah, here we go. "I have had a chance to speak with a couple state foresters in your area about work you proposed and about Mr. Lake's report. They are in agreement with Mr. Lake's assessment, seems thorough. Should you decide to bring him on the project, my colleagues attest to Mr. Lake's experience working with non-native invasive plants, control work, and he should be able to support the town to that effect. There are also other competent contractors, foresters in your area with experience in managing invasive plants. I'd be happy to answer any questions as you move through the process and help contact you with any resources you might need. Management plans, templates, treatment options, et cetera, are available for download in invasives, but I can send direct links if it's helpful. I will caution that eradication is often not achieved in one, in one step, and infestations may take multiple years to remove." So anyways, I kinda started the process and I'm, I'm trying to pull it all together, and at some point you folks would wanna get involved, but I'd like to have it on the agenda for now. And by next meeting, hopefully I'll have some additional information from the visit, this visit on the night.
Could we please request the report to be posted? Would you read it at the end of the Select Board meeting?
Report on?
Hayden's report?
Yeah. We can do that thing.
That'd be great.
Okay. And you know, any, any of these, if you have any questions, you know, Bill's available, you can go in and he'll make you a copy of the reports or...
That's true.
Anything as well, so...
Which is easier?
Either way, but I mean, if you have any questions, I mean, it's all public access, so Bill's there and four days a week, so...
Go see Bill, or you get to see Rocky.
You get to see Rocky.
Who's Rocky?
Any other business?
Oh, Rocky's the dog. Oh, yes. Good dog. Yeah, good reason, thank you.
Any other business? Move to it.
I can just add, invasive plants, Parks Place is doing their garden event, their eighth annual garden event. Manny Holmeyer, Holmeyer's coming on the 22nd at Allison's Orchard, and he's gonna be doing a whole thing on invasive plants, so. Worth going and seeing what he has to say.
All right, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All right. The next meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
The next meeting is April 16th, here at 6 o'clock. All right, so we're adjourned.